There we go. Okay, good evening. This is the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, February 16th, 2022. Will Quayt Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is seven o'clock. We are broadcast live on local channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, Call the meeting to order and ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, justice, or all.
Thank you. First on the agenda, approval of the meeting minutes from February 2nd. Chrissy sent those out.
No problem here.
Problem here.
Comments, edits? Anything?
I had nothing.
I will entertain.
I make a motion September 2nd. Written.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. I don't have a signing sheet. Public discussion?
Just miss card. Don't have too many because the room probably don't.
Good evening.
Hello? Is this on? Okay. Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. So, I'm very happy to be here when you all are going to be talking a little bit more about the local comprehensive plan. I'm really excited about that. I did meet, did go to the presentations last week that Caroline and Ashley did at the Sewer Commission and the Conservation Commission with, of course, Evan. And I was very pleased that they said, the consultants said that they would train people to help facilitate additional workshops. And as I told the town manager and I told Evan last weekend, I told Caroline and Ashley, that's a skill I have. I've been paid to do it. I used to do it all the time for my job as a union rep. And I was actually asked by the Director of the Council on Aging, Lynn Waterman, to do workshops at the senior center on behalf of Barnstable County. So I have done a number of, and I can do any kind of workshop as long as I'm trained. And they said that they would be willing to train people so that when you all are doing additional ones, you have somebody there with you to help you with the flip chart and I don't know, whatever else that we need. But I do hope that I will be able to be trained to do that because I was very pleased to see that my, the president of my homeowners association was on the list and that a lot of the homeowners associations are and a lot of different organizations. So I'm hoping we'll have the chance to have a number of different meetings. And I will just say that I was talking to one of my friends at Laurentide who said, hey, please, can we come there because they don't get out much?
Home point.
And sometimes I think they're a little bored and would love to have some entertainment.
Well, what does something do, right?
So anyway, I said that I would bring it up because I think that would be a great place to do it. Some of those folks that I know who are there have lived in this town a long, 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 long time and still have family here and still really care about what's going on in the town. So I hope you can add Laurentide to your list. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your offer. Okay, is that, that was it?
That's it. That's it.
All right. Approval not required.
I do not see the applicant here nor his attorney, but you will have remembered this plan on Emma Oakley Mills Way in Sunset Strip. It was withdrawn at your last meeting for reasons I'm not certain of, but it was refiled appropriately to the board through your consideration. The initial concern was that the lot to be created by way of this Form A plan, there was no clear indication of the intention to convey the lot to the Mills property identified on the plan. And thus, we were concerned about creating a lot that did not have the appropriate fundage that would be entitled for the A and R endorsement. You'll see a notation added to this plan, whereas it's clearly defined the intent of the property owner to convey said lot to the Emma Oakley Mills Way property and thus would be entitled to A and R endorsement. So I would recommend approving, endorsing the approval not required submission.
Any discussion?
No. I'm satisfied with the notation on it.
I have the Mylar at the table up here with a marker if you guys would like to sign.
So I make a motion that the planning board has determined this is an approval not required plan.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One signature will do unless all of you want to get up and practice your John Hancock.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, does it sign this one too or just that?
I, you don't need to sign one. I scan this one and keep it, so it's okay.
And what I got one of them?
Oh, I knew we sent the wrong guy.
Give him the chance to do it on his own.
I knew we sent the wrong guy up there.
Hey, sent the wrong guy.
Just sign on the bottom line and you can date here on the bottom line.
Put the date too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it is the 16th, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the update from Weston and Sampson. If Caroline on the phone?
Zoom.
She's up there.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I've got, I've got Teams and Zoom running at the same time, so just hoping it all works.
Caroline, can you hear me?
And we can't, we can't see you. We can see sort of a pixelated town seal, so you'll have to speak if.
There we go.
Oh, I see Evan now.
There you go.
Hi.
How's that?
That's much better, thank you.
You can turn it just a little bit more. Thank you.
Caroline, do you guys, are you going to share screen? I didn't load the presentation assuming you would share your screen.
I will give that a try.
All right.
Hi, Ashley.
I'm a little muted.
There we go.
Nice. We can see it.
Got it.
Because that means the audience at home can see it, right?
Are you all set?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, and we don't have too many slides. We just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're keeping, keeping you up to date on what's going on while we kind of work in the background here. And so we'll just go through a couple of, just to give you some updates and let you ask questions. Right now, we're in the middle of our existing conditions research and writing the chapters. And we are still working on the website contracting, which we'll talk about in a minute. I just want to give you an update on a couple of tweaks we made to the schedule and an update to the public engagement schedule as well. And so let you know what we're doing on youth engagement, which we had mentioned at the last meeting was a big priority of this process. So if you recall, on the last comprehensive plan, you had quite a number of chapters. We had talked about putting, putting together fewer chapters that grabbed more information. So those are the titles that you see here. We're looking at a date of about March 4th to wrap up the chapters, but we want to keep in mind that, that these aren't fixed. Once we write them, there's still going to be works in progress because keep updating them based on our, the information we learned from our stakeholder interviews, from our public engagement. So we're trying to establish the baseline of information on the existing conditions, but just know that that is always a work in progress until we get through to the, to the end of the process. So what we do is we amass all of the information that we can pull off of law offline so we don't have anybody on town staff having to chase down things that we can readily get ourselves. And we also have a SharePoint, a shared collaborative folder between Weston and Sampson, Beta Group, and Evan so that we can exchange information and make sure that we have as best data as we can find. Any questions on that?
I have two questions. What's, are these listed in priorities? Like housing is the most important?
No, no, they're not listed in priority order. They're just, right now, they're just, you know, in general order. They are kind of in order of what, of what we're working on right now and that transportation is lagging a little bit behind the others. But for example, right now, we have the natural resources and the open space and recreation, probably three quarters of the way finished and housing as well on its way as well. So it's not in any particular priority order.
I don't understand, what's sustainability? What's that mean? I don't think I know what that means.
Well, sustainability addresses a number of issues. So it can address things like climate change, which obviously will be a thread that runs through a number of different chapters. It can also talk about the energy efficiency of municipal facilities. So it's anything that is about building resilience on the part of the municipality in the face of climate changes.
Okay.
Can I follow up with something? Hey, it's Mary. So, so when you said energy, you're meaning carbon footprint, energy use by the town? Is that what you mean?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was my question too, Dennis.
Okay.
Good.
So, go ahead. If anybody has a question.
No, everybody's good.
Okay, well, so obviously, the website is a primary focus for us, for the town, and we have been reviewing and making recommendations pretty vigilantly. There is a bit of back and forth between the town and Citizen Lab on the contracting. We're hoping that doesn't create major delays in the schedule. If it, if we find that there is some, you know, extensive delays, and Evan can speak to this better than I, but we do have some workarounds so that we're not delaying our community engagement, which is so critical. We can build some information on the town's website and make sure that people have the information that they need to participate.
I have a question. On this website, I know a lot of people that don't even know about the website. I mean, how could we advertise so we can let, like my wife, say my wife? I said, have a look at it, she goes, oh, I don't know how to get on it. And I'm on the planning board, I should show her, but, but, I mean, there's a lot of people like my age that really don't know where to go look for this or if it's even on a website. I mean, we should have a big advertisement maybe, I don't know.
That was on, that's on the calendar, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I think Dennis, I mean, one thing to remember is the engagement we're doing in digital space is really supplementary to all the engagement we're also doing in physical space, more the conventional workshops, seminars, and everything. But one thing we'll make sure we do when we get an website, website up and running, is do conventional blast of information about how and where you can access this information. Assuming you have the internet and you're computer savvy enough, the tool should be relatively user friendly for even someone who's elementary in terms of computer skills. So once we get, once we have a URL and populate a website, we'll put in the newspaper, we'll send mailers, we'll do business cards, we'll do whatever it takes to make sure people know this is a resource and have an opportunity to engage with this process from anywhere that they are.
Yeah.
So I think that would be the intention for me to work with our consultants when we do get the engagement platform solidified. And I'll just add a little bit of clarity around Caroline's comments about contracting. Citizen Lab provided us a contract. Per our usual procurement process, I provided that contract to council and council had some issues with the contract. I have a meeting with him in the morning to hopefully remedy those issues and get moving forth with, but I wanted to make, we, we don't want to have, again, it's been critical for us to get this platform launched congruently with our opening workshop. And we do not want this, a contracting issue to delay engagement in any way. So if this contracting, if the procurement is delayed more than we would like and it would impact the ability for us to launch the community engagement, we're going to utilize the amenities and resources we have within Town Hall, like our own town website, to get the information out. It won't be as interactive as the platform eventually would be, but Weston and Sampson has a fair amount of resources to create interactive tools outside of our town website. It'll be a landing page and a place for people to go and find the resources.
Oh, good.
And we'll certainly need to make sure people are aware of what information is being populated there. Hopefully, we don't need to pivot in that way, but we want to keep the ball rolling and keep the engagement happening, keep people focused and also keep this on, on time. The procurement issue is kind of out of our control at this point, but I've made very clear that this is of the utmost priority for this process. And again, I anticipate that we'll work through the issue in town council first thing in the morning.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
So we have updated the schedule just to kind of reflect the actual start date. We also aligned the chapter development. Transportation was kind of lagging behind in the, in the prior schedule. So all in all, we are, you know, hitting our targets and getting ready for, we're still anticipating a public launch in mid-March. We will actually have, you know, a resource and online resources and printable documents for the public. We are going to work with Evan very closely to develop an actual location and time for that kickoff public workshop that really launches the whole, the whole effort. So we've got a lot of work to do in the coming weeks, but we're, we're on target.
Caroline, you know, it's John, to follow up on, on Dennis's point about, you know, keeping people aware, is there like a coming soon, something we should be doing to let people know that mid-March is, you know, to be watching for something? Might not hurt to get people.
I mean, I think.
Get the people the word out.
Just something to think about. I mean, maybe, I know you don't want to nail down a specific date in case things slip.
Well, we are getting to the point where we'll need to start discussing, you know, a location and a date and, and topical areas. I haven't gotten into that level of detail with Caroline and Ashley yet, you know.
But maybe just watch for updates. You know, something to get to start getting the word out that this is, this is happening.
Understood. I think Caroline and Ashley, a question for you is, when is the appropriate time to hammer down a date in consideration of all of the work that's going to be done over the next few weeks? Assuming, because the planning board meets next, March, I think, 2nd.
2nd.
Which puts us two weeks away from that mid-March point. So is that something that I should be discussing with them independently between now and March 2nd so we could have a closed date and time for our next meeting? And perhaps after March 2nd, do some sort of blast like that?
And you don't even have to put the date on it. Just say, you know, coming soon, mid-March.
I just would like to interject that Mashpee TV would be more than happy to put PSAs out on this.
Oh, good for you.
Thanks, Chris.
On our social media and everything.
Great. Yeah, that's great.
I think Mr. Callahan would love to do that.
That was Chris Ball. Everybody, he thinks he never.
Watch for, you know, coming soon. You don't even have to put dates out. But yeah, that would, just to raise people's awareness that something's coming.
Okay.
Social media, that, everything.
I'll, I'll connect with Caroline and Ashley to figure out the best way to roll that out.
All right.
And I guess what I would say, ask the board is if you have a suggested method for doing such a thing, whether it's a press release, a PSA, both. Any particular types of literature, I would take your direction on that.
Right.
Everything.
Yeah.
Everything you just said.
And more.
You can't, you can't over communicate this.
Understood.
And the town's Facebook page.
Understood.
Does the town have an email blast?
I have not followed up on that yet.
Okay.
I need to figure out that.
An email blast? So, I mean, I know I get a phone call when there's a storm, but do we get emails too?
I don't know, but I asked about the whole email, or the phone blast, that might have been an issue legality wise, but if it's not.
Right, that's, that's money, but I think, there should be a module or maybe we can make one where you sign up for, for news from the town.
Well, I know people, I'm not signing up for persons, I should be, but I know my neighbors and friends, they get updates from the town.
I do too.
I don't know, but there must be a database somewhere.
And, you know, this is also an amenity that we could build into the engagement platform itself once it's live.
Okay.
So you guys will figure it out.
We have a lot of options to look at, all right.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so as you all are discussing and of course, we'll talk with Evan as well, is to really think about community wide, what is the best day of the week for the workshop? Generally, we look at weekends because it's a lot to ask people on a workday or even after a workday to join us and think about the town. So often, we'll do them on a Saturday morning when people are fresh and out and about. And so then we want to think about the appropriate facility. It can be a school, like a school cafeteria or something of that nature where we can accommodate a number of people.
Can I ask you a question, Joe Callahan? I agree with that, not to, I guess, how can we, besides the good nature people of the town, how can we incentivize people to show up?
Pizza.
Coffee. Coffee and muffins.
Have you worked with that kind of concept before?
You can't go wrong with food. It keeps people happy and engaged, definitely. We often set up tables with little activities that are educational, but also give people the opportunity to, to think about things and express, you know, different thoughts that they might have. You know, sometimes we'll have people, you know, locate your favorite place on this map. So it gets them thinking about what we're doing and the whole process, gets them warmed up to it, but it also gives us really great feedback. We can talk about that with Evan further and on what you all need to have a really good showing for your kickoff meeting.
Yeah, I think that people are, this is Mary, I think people are super comfortable going to the library. They're just super comfortable with that. And I, I think, you know, Town Hall, if we can get the, the room, our room divider is stuck here, Caroline and Ashley, so we're in switched and half a room. But people are comfortable coming here. Is there any place, like in the southern part of town?
What about the, depending on the time of day, what about the children's museum? If we ask them?
Or the, or the tribal?
It also depends if it's a rolling activity versus a set activity. If it's a set activity, then everyone's going to have to come at the same time. If it's a rolling activity, then you can accommodate a room this size to handle a few hundred people because it comes up to the day.
I can also ask.
So if you're looking for a big group, this is not going to work, nor is the library going to work. You're going to need something like the high school gymnasium. But if you set up as a rolling activity that people can participate and move on, then you can accommodate more. So it all depends on what they figure out.
Yes, to that point, if you're looking for something, you want something more in the south of Mashpee?
Well, I think that, so Caroline, I think that we should, even though each, each workshop has a different theme to it, we should be at different parts of the town.
Well, I was, to that point, I said I could maybe speak with, because I'm, you know, I have a confidence that I can connect to New Seabird if they want to donate their room in the off season, their banquet room that holds 200 and something people.
Right.
That's an area in south Mashpee.
Oh, and the senior center's room is pretty big.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you've got Southport's huge, they have a huge room. It holds 750.
There'd be a lot of options we can.
Yeah, I think there's plenty of, there's plenty of options.
The senior center is a beautiful room. It's a beautiful room.
Yeah.
Because it's lots of parking too.
Mm-hmm.
That's good stuff, yeah.
We will find the best space to accommodate the most people at the requisite day time.
There you go.
I assure you of this.
Good answer.
Okay, great. Do we, are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, you know, as we're talking about this, the public engagement, as you can see in the upper left, we have that part for the actual launch of, you know, in March. We are currently doing site visits in the public kickoff event. And then we have this three, as we were just discussing, this three built system, natural system and community system public meetings, kind of staggered over the following months. And we are looking to you to help us on the summer events and the places where we can catch people while they're already out and while we're hopefully enjoying the map free summer that we might have ahead. And we'll be doing our stakeholder meetings throughout this time and also running kind of a constant creation of buzz, putting up posters, putting up yard signs and such around town. So that is our engagement schedule. As we go through each month, we'll start pinning down actual dates and so you'll have a more refined calendar.
I have a question, are we going to be restricted with the COVID virus? You think?
What?
Be, be restricted? Like you said, we can't have more than so many people.
I, I don't think we'll ever.
Well, there's no restriction right now for number of people, so I don't see why there would be.
I don't think we'll ever get to the capacity.
Head tired of it.
Yeah, I'm not worried about capacity.
We're all tired of it.
We'll cross that bridge and get to it, you know?
The other thing, we just, we just did a housing summit in Yarmouth and one was in person and then one was all virtual. And we had the same number of people at each. So we might want to think about having one event all virtual because there are some people that are not coming out. They, they just are not. And it, it wasn't that hard to do. On Zoom, we had breakout groups and polls. It wasn't that hard, so.
No, it's, what I've found is the hybrid ones are the ones that are difficult to manage.
Yes.
All in person or all virtual is usually.
Right. They wanted a hybrid and I said, no way, we're having.
Hard to do.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
We discussed, this was discussed at a department head meeting, Dennis, at the beginning of January, I guess, when everyone was starting to panic again a little bit. And really, the messaging was, you know, we expected, we expected the surge back in January or whatever. It was the winter. I think we remain optimistic that things will trend appropriately and we use our discretion as things progress. If in the moment, things change substantially, well, then we'll assess that at the time. But right now, I think we're looking at comprehensive and complete in-person workshops supplemented by digital activities.
Good. All right.
Great. So one thing that we're working on right now is a youth engagement toolkit. So we've assembled a number of different activities for students to work on. And we've, we're using our graphics group to kind of make it very user friendly for kids. We will have a student-based steering committee for this process. And we talked about having the students sort of brainstorm the branding ideas for the, for the comprehensive plan and help our graphics group sort of shape the, the look and feel of the comprehensive plan. But this is all in its very beginning stage, but we're kind of excited about it. Ashley did a lot of the work on this of coming up with different ways in which kids can think about their community and, and offer some feedback on, on how they see the community growing and developing.
So I have a comment, Caroline and Ashley. So I, when I printed this out, I couldn't read it in detail, so I don't know if, I saw that you had commercial and residential, you know, you're introducing some zoning terms. And I was just wondering if you could also introduce something like, you know, like architectural and site design standards, like if, as you get to know Mashpee more and more, you'll see that we have a lot of vegetated and landscape buffers. And it's kind of responsible for, you know, when you're driving around town, the, the beauty of the town. And I kind of wanted to, you know, kind of introduce that concept too, that it's, it's not just the use, but how it looks, you know? That a lot of times, people won't like a project because it has ugly architecture, but if it has beautiful architecture, people are more receptive. And I'm wondering if the kids would pick up, the, the students would pick up on that. Does that make any sense?
I'm new. No, sorry. Well, while she's figuring that out, it's a, it's a good point that you make. Obviously, when we talk about quality of life issues and livability, you know, what we see is, is primary. So I don't know what Ashley was going to say, but engaging the students on, on commenting on, on what they feel is attractive in the community, I think it would be a good exercise.
Yeah, I liked it. I just, you know, I couldn't read all the words, but I, I really liked it.
Can everyone hear me or just Caroline?
No, we can hear you.
I can hear you now.
Okay, good. What I was gonna say was, this is just one example of, of a full toolkit that we're putting together. So we are asking, and, and we're gearing it towards different kind of grade levels as well. One of the other exercises is asking, you know, children to walk around their neighborhood and make observations about the built environment and the natural environment and what they see in their neighborhood and what they like and what they, what they like to see that's not there.
Yeah.
So I think when you see the full toolkit all together, you'll see that we're trying to address different issues with different activities, and hopefully we'll cover all of those topics once we put the entire toolkit together.
I see. So this, this slide I couldn't read, but Evan just handed me the, the matrix that you, you did. It's not on, it's not on the slide. It's separate. Yep, okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is just one example of how we're putting this toolkit together, and there'll be a series of activities within it that, like I said, address different issues and get, get the students thinking about different things.
This is great, Ashley.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, I think it'll be a lot of fun.
And it's for different levels of school, right? You have high school, middle school.
Right, so some of these will be, you know, a little more elevated in terms of the, of the process that they'll go through. Others are just more simple activities that we might, you know, we want to cover all grade levels. So we're trying to gear it towards, you know, more simple activities that are easier to, for, for younger children to do, and then some more kind of in-depth. And really, these can be tailored a bit. And we're trying to make it as easy as possible for the teachers to implement it. We're, you know, trying to provide them with easy instructions, very few resources needed to conduct the exercises, but still trying to gather, you know, good feedback from the students when they, when they go through these activities. So I think they're scalable to some degree. You know, a 12th grade geography class might spend a little bit more time and do a more in-depth review than, say, you know, a 4th grade class. But we're leaving them open enough that the teachers can kind of, you know, they know their classroom, they know their students. We just want to give them the basic tools that they need to, to put these into play in the classroom in, in the way that they feel would work best.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
Basically, just wraps up our summary. So we're happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Anybody? Mary?
So I, I looked at, Evan was kind enough to send me the list of stakeholders, so I looked at them. And I've, I've added many groups. You know, I didn't see the Chamber of Commerce on there, the Children's Museum.
Trumper's on there, I saw that.
Is it?
Katie's on that I saw, yeah.
We've, we've got a very active Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. We also are, you know, Racoia Bay is one of the most productive estuaries north of the Chesapeake Bay, and we have that beautiful Webner Racoia Bay National Estuary Reserve. We also, we have, you know, several additional churches and, like, human service providers. So I, I made a list, and should I email it to you, Evan, and then you can add it?
If you could also, if possible, include a contact person in the email, otherwise I'll be.
Okay, I'll try. I told you I would help you, so I will.
And if not possible, I can, I can do that outreach.
Yeah.
I will populate the list. Because, and just for Ashley and Caroline, I, I do have a well-populated working document for the stakeholders list now that I, I need to transmit back to you. I'll put it in the SharePoint.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Right. And I think that we'll have to figure out, you know, obviously, you can't go to all these places, right? We can't go to all these places. So we have to figure out, you know, how we're gonna, are we just outreach to these people and having them come to our events? Is that what the thought is?
I think, I think a little bit of both. I think, yes, targeted outreach directly to these stakeholders to participate in the workshops, but I think also targeted stakeholder interviews for the appropriate, for those stakeholders that would have valuable information to provide in the plan's development itself.
Right.
And I also added, and I've been talking to Evan, I think this week, maybe last week, about, you know, on our official list of documents for you to look at, you know, formally add the Cape Cod Commission Regional Policy Plan and their 340-page document of technical bulletins. So, you know, the place types that we're working with have, they are addressed in each technical bulletin. So they have a technical bulletin, for example, on open space, right? And there's different levels of performance and offset and mitigation based on what place type you're in. So it's something, if we're gonna use place types, it's something that we really have to get comfortable with these technical bulletins. They're not summarized very well in the document that the Cape Cod Commission has put out. I don't know if that can be part of the work that we do now, is to kind of summarize that. But we don't want to accidentally put a part of town in a place type that, you know, we're not gonna ask for traffic mitigation, right? We don't want to accidentally, you know, if you, if, I don't really understand how all the technical bulletins work, but we don't want to accidentally lose our affordable housing because we picked a certain place type. So, and I know that we've been saying that they're conversational pieces, but they really have a huge impact on the town, and we wouldn't want to miss out on some, some benefit to a larger development in town because we thought we were gonna get certain mitigation or offset, and we didn't because we, you know, years ago, put it in a plan that it was a certain place type. So have you guys, have you guys looked at the technical bulletins at all? Okay. Did you, did you enjoy them, Ashley?
I've never seen a technical bulletin that was over 300 pages until now.
It's, I'm gonna hold it up for the camera. It's this big. It's, it's huge. It's huge. And I was trying to figure out a way to kind of make a big chart and summarize it. I don't know if that's possible. So anyway, I think anything that you do to help us have a tool to understand those place types with respect to the technical bulletins would just be so useful to the community. And I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Caroline, I just have a question about the stakeholder meeting. So you're having these meetings. How are the, how is the, the input, you know, who's, who's taking the information? How is it gonna be summarized and then somehow presented back? I guess would be my question.
So, yeah, we, we have a, we have to develop our strategy around that, and I think we're waiting for the stakeholder list to be finalized, because it depends on, on the stakeholders, like, if they're municipal, you know, department directors, we're gonna ask a certain amount of questions and, you know, integrate that as either footnotes or in an appendix. At the end of the whole process, there's gonna be a lot of sort of stakeholder interview notes that aren't really part of the plan, but they're part of the public record.
Okay.
So there's that. But there are other different types of stakeholders who might be community group leaders or something like that, where the information we're getting from them is, it's broader, you know? It's more, it's more informative. It's not like it's a fact that will go into a plan. It's more building out our understanding of a particular issue. So that, you know, if I can answer this without being overly vague, that'll still be part of the public record as a, as an actual stakeholder interview, but it won't be directly referenced in the plan. It's more, you know, part of our overall understanding of, of, of the existing conditions or somebody's future perspective. Does that make sense, I hope?
No, it does. It, I was just curious as to how the, how the information was gonna be gathered, and then how was it gonna be summarized.
Yeah, so we have, we developed the questions in advance, and we usually supply it to the person in advance so that they can think about it. And what'll usually happen is likely gonna be Ashley and I or another staff person. So we interview the person, and then another person will record their, their feedback. The stakeholders, they're often, it's a two-way street to, we're not just asking information from them, but we're also asking to tap into their network.
Right.
So there's a couple of different reasons for the stakeholder list.
Great, thank you.
Chairman, I have one more question. So you went to the Sua Commission and the Conservation Commission? Do you have any more of those meetings scheduled? Are you going to any other boards and committees?
We'll plan on going to more boards and committees, but they're non-scheduled, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Chairman, the Wampanoag Government Center has a very large room where they do, they have done public, they have there.
Right, yeah.
On South Cape. So that would be asking, then if we could use their space.
Yeah. When, when we get a liaison appointed by the tribal chairman to the tribe, it's a question I'll pose to him about utilizing their space for at least one workshop.
Yeah, that's great.
It's a great space.
Yeah, it is. Okay, anything else? Caroline, Ashley, Evan?
Broke that.
No.
I have one question. When I first asked the question right at the beginning about the priorities, I don't understand why we didn't do a simple survey through the whole town. So maybe most of the town wants transportation before housing, or housing. But we don't, we're like making this thing up, and we don't even know how the town really feels about certain items. There may be a thousand people say, gee, I think transportation is more important than housing and more important than the climate change than they're worrying about getting jobs here or something. But I don't understand how we can do this without having like a simple survey to, to see where the town's heads at, like how many, where we're actually at, and then trying to go with the town people want. It seems like we're, we're giving out this thing, and then we're bringing it to the town people, and they may say, gee, I think this priority's more important than this, and they're seeing this one more than the town people see it. Do you understand?
Well, so the town people, I mean, obviously, the townspeople, their, their observation and opinions are extremely important. But the reason we usually start with an existing condition is because what we're at, what we're assembling is data and all prior work where the community has expressed its opinions of prior plans. We're kind of amassing that all together. So we're not being redundant. We're not asking people things that they've already gone over. And so what we do when we amass the existing conditions, and, and you all will see those reports and be able to comment on those as well, is getting all of the data so people can compare apples to apples, and they will definitely have the ability to prioritize their different goals and actions. But what we, it's a little bit of back and forth. We give the public the information so that they're, they have the information and they're educated on, on all of what the data is saying and what they have said in prior plans. And then they can kind of understand where they're, how they can prioritize. Does that make sense?
So, yeah, so in other words, after we get all this information, and then the people, we can draft what we really want out of this plan.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
So Caroline.
The goals and policies and actions is really where the, is really where the, kind of the prioritization starts to come into play. Right now, we're just setting the baseline for information so that we can build on, on what you have now and determine what direction the town wants to take all of these different areas. So for instance, transportation, we need to lay a baseline of information there about what you have existing for transportation, and then we start to engage the community and say, with what we know about transportation as it currently exists, what direction does the town want to move in? And then we can use goals and policies and actual action items to lay the foundation for the town to move in that direction. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but I want to make sure the planning boards tell the town, we're inviting all the people into this process, and we're gonna listen to them and, and try to get the best plan for the town of Mashpee. I want to make sure all the people in Mashpee know the planning board's working for them, and, and we need their input to help our decision be made easier. I just want to make, I'm just concerned about that. I want people come back and say, I didn't know about this, or how come we didn't know about that? I want to make sure we do the best we can to get all our information out for, for the town. And thank you for your answer. I see, I understand it.
Okay, great.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Caroline answered, well, so, thank you.
No, I think, I think we're good.
Very good. I really was informative.
Yeah, great.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you both.
Bye.
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 All right. Sign written special permit.
I need to get it from my office.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's quite all right. While he's, while Evan's getting that. The only thing I had was, I don't know if you had a chance to, to read this new homeowner survey.
Too many pages on my computer.
Start with the executive summary, because it's actually, the executive summary's pretty good. But this, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information. I found it interesting. It was a little depressing because it was more of sort of the same, you know, age 55-plus.
Yeah.
Wealthier, no kids, and it doesn't really.
Address them.
It's, yeah, it's, it's more of the same, which, which I was discouraged about. But it's, it's a, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good read.
John, did, did we send this to Caroline and Ashley?
I have no idea.
I don't think I have. I will do some.
Let's send it to Caroline and Ashley, because I did look at it, and, yeah, it was, it was interesting. It felt like it was a little bit of a snapshot of past surveys, Dennis. You tell me after you read it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's great.
So we're good? Evan with special permit. That's done. All right, town planner, oh, you know what? We've got the Planning Board Annual Report.
Yes, it was good.
We've got a draft of it. If I could ask for a motion to add it to the agenda so that we can then make a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
By roll call, by roll call vote, Mr. Chairman. When you add something to the agenda, it has to be by roll call vote.
Dennis?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
Good joke.
Thank you. Joe had to leave.
Oh.
Okay, now I will entertain a motion to approve the annual report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Evan.
No, it's common because you're following Robert's rule, because that's where I knew Robert was.
I sleep with that thing at night.
All right, am I up?
You're up.
And, and thank you for approving the annual report. I'm sorry, I didn't get on prior agenda.
Thank you for reading it.
Okay. I was, first, at the top of the list, the deadline for the submission of warrant articles passed on Monday, the 14th. The Friday prior to that Monday, I was notified by the overlay from last October that they would be refiling. It was the first I had heard from them in many months. So I was a bit of a surprise that they were refiling, but it's my understanding they did submit the petition. I understand there may be additional zoning petitions that were submitted. I just wanted to keep you in the loop once I get certification from the clerk that the petitions were submitted true and accurate to form. They become a public record, and I'll ask you to set a public.
Okay.
I think the LCP update is pretty much done. No additional information from me in that regard. I think you. me in that regard. I think you've heard everything from Caroline and Ashley. Uh, my primary update was about the contracting for Citizen Lab that, uh, is kind of my number one priority at the moment. And I'll, I'll keep you apprised via email between now and March 2nd of the status of that. At our last meeting, I discussed a potential recommendation to reestablish the Open Space Committee. Uh, so, but on Thursday morning, I went into the office and I got a phone call immediately from the town manager relative to this. Um, it is my understanding now that when the town adopted the Community Preservation Act, all of the members of the Open Space Committee became CPC members.
Okay.
So the CPC is the, in essence, the Open Space Committee.
The Open Space. I got you.
So my question, I guess, to the board is, I still think there's somewhat of a lacking mechanism in town hall to make recommendations to the CPC for open space acquisitions. Does it need a new committee? I don't know. I think I seek the direction of the board on this. But what we are noticing in town hall is, um, when Drew in the conservation wants to, has identified a parcel, I have identified a parcel. We, we don't, we're not certain of the mechanism with which to make a recommendation, uh, to begin a conversation with that property owner to, in essence, understand if they might be interested in selling it for that purpose. So, um, as I understand the construct of the CPC now, as it's the Open Space Committee, nothing could occur. And I was simply, either with the board or Drew with his commission, could submit a written memorandum suggesting that the CPC reaching out to a potential property owner for an open space acquisition. That would work. Um, I, I'm not sure in the best, the best way to approach it.
All right. So I always called it land bank, but it was officially called Open Space Committee.
The Open Space Committee, yes.
Okay. And they used the land bank money, remember, the 3% before it went to community preservation. So right now, the culture on the Community Preservation Committee is that they do not make applications to themselves. It's just the culture. It, I don't think it's illegal for them to go forward with an application, but it's the culture of the, of the committee. We did at our last meeting, asked the chair to meet more regularly, but I haven't heard anything. So I think there is a need for a separate five-person committee to go out and look and be a place for when somebody comes to the town saying, I want to sell this land to the town because it's been in my family. There's lots of reasons people sell land to a town for conservation. Um, that there's a place for them to, you know, to go to and be met. Community preservation might have trouble negotiating with a property owner because then the application comes to them too. Do you know what I mean? To negotiate the price. It just, it feels a little incestuous, you know? Like I think it should be like a, like a, a separate committee.
It makes sense, I think, to staff also to work in that way. I mean, we've identified a handful of parcels that are still, um, held privately that I think are not suitable for residential developments or any development for that fact, um, that are in residential districts, often in sensitive areas, often with, uh, frontage or continuity with either like Matthew Wakeby or the Wildlife Refuge. Um, and so we're interested in understanding how this mechanism can work. So if it's, if it's a third-party committee, because that's what we want to know is, uh, we as staff and me personally, as town planner, do not feel it's appropriate to establish a line of negotiation with a private property owner.
Right.
On behalf of the town with no authorization to do so. So I'm perfectly satisfied again. I didn't prepare a memo because of the conversation I had relative to how the CPC kind of became and how the Open Space Committee didn't just, it didn't go away. It became something new. Um, so I'd be happy if it's the direction of the board to draft that memo as Mary just described, um, to submit. Because I, I do think there's a mechanism that's lacking in town hall. And I think Drew and I would certainly be, um, satisfied with having a committee or commission, uh, to work with, uh, to begin kind of facilitating these, these potential negotiations.
And there could, there could be somebody from the Planning Board on it, somebody from Conservation, you know, the Environmental Oversight Committee, maybe two members at large, you know, you know, you might not want to have too much crossover, like not somebody who sits on the CPC on that committee or the Board of Selectmen just because they vote. They later on in the purchase process vote on that matter. So it's like, do you want to give people two votes? You know, that's, if you just look at the, the process thread, you don't want to have one person being in there twice.
At the very least, a pathway should be identified so for people to follow. They know what they got to do. And the pathway would not only help you, but it would help someone who was interested in, you know.
In selling.
Giving some land to the town.
Then I will take that as the direction to draft a memo for your review at the next meeting. Sorry, we don't have it today, but I wasn't exactly sure how to proceed given the news I received from the town manager. So I think that does make sense. I think there's a certain infrastructure that's to facilitate such a, a potential acquisition. So, um, until March 2nd, but I'll, I'll work on preparing that for your review at the next meeting.
Well, it may make sense to have, have an updated conversation with the town manager.
Indeed.
Yes.
Right. And I don't even know if there could be a spot reserved from somebody from the tribe or a preference for that. I don't know. That's something else to think about.
Sounds good. Uh, moving on, if you're ready. Uh, Poppy Overlay District, um, I had some subsequent conversations with residents in Papa Nessa relative to the conversation I had with you at your last meeting. And, um, they are establishing, I guess, steering committee, a working group between the collective neighborhood associations. I didn't realize there are actually three neighborhood associations.
I'm surprised the Papa Nessa Overlay District.
It's the Papa Nessa Beach Association, which is the big one, the Wilson's Grove Association and the Overlook Knoll Association.
Wow.
Um, so they'll, Glenn McCarthy, a resident of the district, along with Barbara Riley, a former president of the Papa Nessa Beach Association, are keeping me in the loop, but they're finalizing a list of residents of the district to begin facilitating these conversations with the planning board and hopefully with the zoning board appeals relative to the issues that I defined for you at the last meeting. So I'm just waiting for some clarity from them about who, who is going to be participating and who their primary contact is. Obviously, I know Glenn and Barbara, whom I just mentioned. Um, but hopefully short, you know, in some amount of time, a short amount of time, that group will be identified and we can begin discussing ways, or the appropriate forum for discussing and fleshing out those issues as we work towards hopeful solutions to the issues we identified there in Papa Nessa.
That was Barbara Riley?
Yes.
Is that who you said? Okay.
Yes. And Glenn McCarthy.
Yep.
Um, any questions on that?
No.
Uh, the last is, I did submit, uh, a request for funding under the district local technical assistance, as I said I would, to match funds, uh, for the update of the housing production plan. Again, CPC did submit, is my understanding, are submitting an article to selectmen for the totality of the need, necessary funds. But, um, the takeaway from, from my presentation to CPC was that you should continue to seek alternative sources to match. Um, and so I submitted 25,000 and the hope would be 25,000 from D L T A, 25,000 from the CPC to procure for the housing production plan update. Um, that was submitted on time. We'll hope that we, we get that funding and, um, more long-term planning to be done.
When will you know?
They turn around that grant pretty quickly. Um, I, without being too bold, I would say within a couple of months. Probably sooner.
I was going to say, that's quickly?
That's lightning speed.
Thank you. Oh, boy.
Lightning speed.
All right.
Uh, is that it?
Yep. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Committee reports. Cape Cod Commission.
No report.
Community Preservation.
No report.
Design Review. Joe said no report.
He said he had nothing to report.
Plan Review.
Plan Review did not meet.
Wow. Neither did Environmental Oversight, Historic Districts.
No meeting.
Wow. Military Civilian Advisory Council.
No meeting.
That was fast.
It's Dennis' time.
Anything in correspondence we should keep paying particular attention to?
Uh, just, um, nothing, nothing specific. We just have general notices from the budding towns. Um, they're all in your packet. I didn't send them to you before because everything's breaking. The screen's broken and the scanner is not sending files to my desktop, but you have them all. It's all standard notices from Falmouth Sandwich Barn School, excuse me.
All right. Thank you.
I think our motion should be adjourned. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Good luck.